All right, I'd like to open the planning board meeting of two seventeen, two thousand and fifteen. I'll make that motion. I need a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, show the meeting opened at seven forty-seven. Okay, first up, we've got three things before us tonight. Basically, we're gonna have Skip Sheehan weigh subdivision off of Salem Street first.
Continuum.
Uh, continuum. Uh, we're also going to have, uh, two bylaws going into the existing bylaw. And, um, for the second part of the meeting tonight, and the third part will be Esti Way. Just so you know what order we're gonna take everything in. Okay. All right, Skip Sheehan way up first.
One question, did GZA get you the copy that he emailed me with the twelve pages of bullet points?
I'm sorry, are you talking to me?
No. We're not on your project.
They're not, it's not GZA, it's Cameron.
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 I'm sorry, yeah, Cameron.
Yes, we have their comments.
Yeah.
Alan Roscoe from Cameron Engineering. I'll give you hard copies of what I forwarded you earlier.
Yep.
It's a fairly lengthy report, but we wanted to get as shorter and shorter as we went, but I thought it was important. Uh, in the last several weeks, uh, it was important to show all the items that we talked about and how they were addressed and how they were resolved. So, um, it documents all of the issues that we brought up from our initial review up to the present time. In brief, I think we're at a point where we could start to make some decisions. Um, all the technical issues, I think, are squared away as far as subdivision control law, uh, stormwater management and the like. Um, we do have some issues we should be talking about procedurally, um, dealing with the special permits. Um, and additional notations that need to be added to the plan depending upon whether we have comments from the Board of Health. Um, how we dispose of or how we resolve the special permits for the land disturbance. And the activity in the water resource protection district. Um, we do have a list of waivers that I think could be prudent to act on at this time. Uh, there was a new one added, uh, the last week or so, um, changing some of the, um, configuration and materials to be used in the cul-de-sac. Uh, we have no objection to that particular waiver. We've had no objection to the other waivers that were, that were brought forward. Um, but, uh, that being said, I think we're at a point now where we could, you know, talk about how we, you know, close out this project.
So, Alan, you saw these waivers already? You've reviewed these waivers?
Yes.
The ones that Scott, oh.
They were proposed early on in the submittal process and then last week, um, as a, presumably as a cost-saving item. Um, the cobblestones that were proposed around the cul-de-sac landscaped island. Um, they decided to have those removed and will enhance and expand the landscaped island, so we have less than pervious area.
Before, before Alan was here, that was one of my very first things that I asked, uh, in one of the meetings about the, almost just cost, the fact of handling the landscape and stuff, so.
This afternoon, the board just got a letter from the Water and Sewer. And, uh, have you seen that one that, uh?
I have not.
Yep.
Does recommend that Cameron pick up the cost of the water.
Oh, that's fine.
I've got an extra copy if you want.
That's it?
Yeah. I thought they were planning on coming off of Dartmouth Street.
So, he's already reviewed the.
It makes sense.
I'm gonna ask a question on the round here.
Yes.
Well, they, that, I already.
Is the sidewalk in there?
Issues with the slope.
Yeah.
I told him, he's gotta go out and take.
Oh, okay, it's still.
There's a big height difference.
Or so.
Huge, so.
A lot of work to build it.
Uh, my, my only reservation on that is my cost. I have no problem helping them with it. There's a big height difference on that, so.
The, uh, road commissioner has a question on the rounding.
Just on the rounding, Alan, on the intersection, you know, on the intersection of the new road and.
Right.
This is the first time I saw this, uh, waiver. That's why, so, um, what do you mean by, what's he mean by no rounding at the east side? It's gonna be a ninety degree.
Because of the lot line configurations and it's not on property that's under their control. So, we'll be able to build the rounded transition at the curb line, but the property line rounding.
Oh, the property line, not the curb.
Is, um, is not gonna be able to be complied with.
Okay. Oh, yeah, it does say property line rounding, all right. Okay, that's all, that's all right.
I thought it was curb rounding. We wouldn't do that, no.
I know, I didn't think so, that's why.
Do you need time to go over the, uh, Water and Sewer's recommendations that they want you to adhere to on?
I mean, my, what I'd just like to stipulate, um, I, I will work with the town on that. There is a big height difference there.
Right.
Big height difference, um, on there. And my cost is, I mean, if it's not absorbent, I'll pick up the cost on it. The board's been gracious enough to work with me on other items, uh, on there and try to help the town out. Um, I told, he was very nice to the water department. Uh, we'll work as a team on this, you know, while I get the equipment. The fortunate thing out there, it's bank gravel, so it's easy digging on that. My concern is the height. There's a big transition difference there, real big. Um, so, that's my main concern and how far down the street it is. He doesn't know where the water, where it stopped. So, um, you know, I don't know what to say. I'd be happy to do this if it's not absorbent.
All right, so, we'll be looking into that. And the only other sticking point would be the land disturbance.
Yep.
So, uh, you need to talk it over and figure out what you can do on it, whether you're required to hold a special permit or if you fall under the, uh, footage.
We're gonna fall under if I go with pervious pavement on the sidewalk, so we're good with that. And it's fourteen point seven percent. I'll pick up the extra cost of that, that material.
Yeah, just as long as the town is aware of it.
Right, no, uh.
Take over, they'll take over the road, they'll be required to do the maintenance on it.
Bob and I are familiar, uh, UNH did a, uh, study on the impervious. And I've seen videos and stuff through Mary McValley Planning Commission too. Other towns have used it. And, uh, it works good.
So, what would the cul-de-sac be for?
You put an island in the middle?
Yeah, I wanna landscape it. I don't, you know.
But what would the pavement width be around that, twenty-two?
Yeah, that's right. Be consistent with the remainder of the lower.
Yeah. It's just the water that's. You know, you can't, are we ready, if they straighten out the water, we could close this, couldn't we?
I think so, yeah.
Well, we, we gotta vote these waivers.
Yeah, but we can do that tonight.
Yeah.
But if they don't, if he hasn't, is not commit to the water, we can't, we won't, right?
Right, that's the, uh, thing that needs to be.
The holding up point is the water.
It's either that continuance, uh, or if you agree to all the, uh, requirements.
If I, if I agree to that, okay, to pick up the water, all right, at a, I mean, a, a state uses a guideline with a, you go per square, per linear foot, okay, for cost and stuff. And if that exceeds over twenty percent, would the town consider helping me out with that? On just that section?
We don't.
We, we couldn't dictate that and put a burden on that.
No.
But, uh, let me ask the, uh, water department, Tom, it's a fifteen-foot, uh, difference between the roadway on his, uh, planned development and.
And what we looked at on the plan.
So, he'd have to go another four feet down, so he's talking nineteen-foot, uh, cut at least on his spot to get the water line?
Well, you don't need to go that much.
No, you, you just transition it down.
Transition down the hill. I think his concern is the linear footage when you get down the bottom.
Oh, okay, yeah.
You know where you're at right there?
I, I don't, and we haven't, we haven't been able to go out there and mark that main yet. And we will, but we'll find out where the end of it is.
Yeah.
Um, the only, I can't commit to anything outside of the board, of order, so we're gonna have to have, you know, certainly, if you come into the board meeting, we can talk about that.
You know what, I, uh, but your, your, those are all serviced, the houses that are there right now, right?
I believe they're all serviced by a man.
Well, we can continue until the next meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
I just, uh, this keeps getting continued, uh, the meeting. I wanna, uh, I'm gonna, uh,
Well.
I'm gonna authorize.
I don't know if it hurts you, Scott, to continue it.
All right.
I mean, I think we're all thinking along the same lines that we're close here, and if there's another issue that's gonna come up, um, I just don't want you to be.
With the approval of the waivers.
Yeah.
So, at the hearing, we're stuck with what we have here.
Okay. So, what, so what hap, please bear with me, so what happens? You vote the waivers right now?
Yeah, we'd have to vote each, each waiver individually.
Okay, so that would get voted tonight?
Yes, we can do that tonight, but, you know, you'll have to take it up with the water department at that point, and then we'll have to come back with you relative to what, you know, you want to do, they want to do.
And you'll need to update the drawings to show, I mean, this is gonna be part of the subdivision now, so you'll have to show the water and the extension out to Dartmouth Street.
Yeah, Jack, will that as a question?
Question, uh, we just received the plans. I know this project probably wasn't the worst. We received them on, uh, the thirteenth of this month.
I brought them over to you.
Is there any reason why we couldn't have had them earlier? And we probably would've had answers for you. You could've met with us and would've asked the board, and then you could've sent to the board. This was the one that I was.
We, we handed plans back in, uh, when was it?
September.
September, I've been in the town hall. So, that's, that's, you know, obviously there was just a missing.
Yes.
Well, over the deep end or something.
We're gonna do a Friday.
Yeah, it's not the, I know, it's, uh.
I think with us, they would be used to come to the board meeting. For one, we'll do a little bit of work out there and sign over the end of the main there.
Yeah.
It may need to be a test fit down also.
This is what I don't wanna get, I gotta get going on this.
We're meeting on the first Tuesday and the third of every month now, so.
I'm gonna, uh, I'm still, I'm gonna authorize it. Uh, I will do, uh, I will loop the water for them.
All right. You decide, you wanna read those in and we'll vote on one at a time? Or do you wanna?
Is there gonna be a vote tonight or not?
I don't know.
No, I think on discussion permit.
I don't know. It's Ja, uh, February, if you want, we're gonna, we meet twice a month, if you wanna, like Alan said.
Yeah, I mean, we still need to, um.
I didn't think of that one.
Prepare, review. If they vote tonight, you only got twenty days to perfect that, and then they're forced to.
Yeah.
To vote, so I, to me, I'd rather have all the clutter tidied up. And make sure you have enough time to get the things done that you need to get done.
Because we'll meet the first week in March, which is not too.
As their consultant, I don't wanna put the town in a position where they have to deny it over something silly.
All right, all right.
And then you can work something out with them. You might be able to work something to help you.
They've got a rule on the plan that's before them, and if it's not a hundred percent.
You can vote on the waivers if you.
I think, yeah, you can vote on the waivers, 'cause I think we are close enough to get a clear direction here.
All right, so we're gonna vote on these and then continue it to the, uh, who's got a calendar?
March, yeah, we'll have to set up the next hearing and everything. Can you see that calendar way in the back? What's one, two, three, March third?
I think there's one right behind.
No, no, they put it down there.
Oh, did they?
Yeah, it'd be three, three. And three seventeen again, okay? All right, um, you're all right, we're gonna carry this forward till three, three, okay?
We're gonna do this.
But we will do the waivers tonight, okay? We're gonna vote on those now. Okay. All right, the first one is section three, point four, point four, point six, waiver from the requirement to submit a site-specific soil map. Make a motion that we accept that waiver.
Motion to accept the waiver.
Okay.
Seconded.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Just for a point of view, Bob and I have been digging there since nineteen sixty, so we, we know the soil there.
Yeah, pretty soon.
There's certainly been enough testing.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. If those unanimous. All right, section three point four, point two, point twenty, waiver from the requirement to submit an environmental impact statement.
Motion to accept the waiver.
Seconded.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, let me get this down. Okay, section three point four, point two, point two-two, waiver from the requirement to submit a traffic report.
Motion to accept the waiver.
Seconded.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, section four, point three, point eight, point nine, property line rounding at intersection.
Motion to accept the waiver.
Seconded.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. If those unanimous. Motion passes. All right, let's see. Okay, section four, point three, point nine, point three, pavement width.
Motion to accept the waiver.
I've got one amendment to that. The huttop part of it, the asphalt is fine to go down to twenty-two. But I'd like to see the gravel, when you put the gravel base in, to carry it a foot over on either side.
All right, over that.
And that will cover any wheels going off the road and stuff, just stabilize curbing and everything.
Okay, so we wanna put.
Gravel base twenty-four.
Okay, I need a motion on that. Motion to accept.
To accept the amendment to the waiver.
As amended. Seconded.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Section four point nine three, sidewalks on both sides of roadway.
That needs to be amended to, uh, one-side sidewalks, candy cane, and it's the impervious.
Yeah, doesn't it say it on the waiver?
All right, what's, what's the other side? Was gonna propose roadway on.
It doesn't talk about impervious.
Yeah, so it's just the impervious needs to be added to the.
Okay, I need a motion on the amended section four point nine, point three waiver.
Motion to accept the amendment to the waiver.
Seconded.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Section four point one one, point one, and section five point three, point one, side slopes. Variance is requested from the requirement for four to one side slopes to allow a proposed retaining wall where adjacent slopes cannot be met.
Motion to accept the waiver.
Seconded.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. What is this? Is this another one?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, typical cul-de-sac detail. Variance is requested from the requirement for an eleven-foot wide ring of cobbles at the center of the cul-de-sac. Area to be landscaped instead.
No, that won't be that, though, would it? It would be paved instead.
I don't know where that lies on the dam.
This is where you're putting the, uh, underground pipes for the discharge of the, uh, ring on it. Yeah, were you gonna landscape over that?
I'm gonna landscape all over that.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that would make the pavement only eleven feet going around the cul-de-sac then.
No, it's still twenty-two feet.
It's still twenty-two, yeah.
Oh, I thought it was eleven pavement and eleven cob, cobblestone.
No, nope.
Oh, it was just gonna be cobblestone in the middle?
Yeah.
Well, that may actually help you get a little.
Yeah.
Oh, motion to accept the waiver.
Seconded.
Are you all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
A motion passes.
Yeah, that's close.
Now, I think we just continue it.
Oh, I wanna ask them on the retaining wall in regards with the.
Okay, anything else at this point in time, or?
Yeah, um, retaining wall, um, I am asking the board, okay, once, and it can be a stipulation on it, once it's voted on, um, with the retaining wall, just in case if there was ever any changes or anything. The stamp, this has to be stamped anyway, okay, but I don't wanna pay for the stamp. They charge you for the stamp, basically, on the drawings. It's a pre-engineered wall, okay? Uh, and I wanted, until it's approved through, then I'll submit the, the stamped drawings, 'cause they charged me eight hundred, and it's gonna be about eight hundred and eighty dollars, uh, for the engineer to stamp it lands. So, I just don't wanna do it until it's approved. They, it's a way.
You're gonna need to leave that with me, but I'll look at it. I was involved in building a haze block wall on Marion and also over here at Common Drive to the cemetery, which was the biggest wall that we built, so. We'll make a determination after the continuance on this. Or I'll get back to you early and, and then you can get it stamped.
You know what other thing that I can think of is housekeeping thing about the streetlights?
I talked, I talked with the electrical department and stuff. He was real nice. Um, he said one streetlight he wants. They go every, basically, three hundred feet. So, I said wherever he wants to put it, it's fine with me. Um, so, one streetlight, they talked about.
Okay.
Did you give him plans? Did you give him plans?
I gave him a whole set of, he has a whole set of plans. Yeah, I went over to the department and dropped it off for them.
We don't know the location, so we have.
All right.
Yeah, well, I'll have him call you. Well, I, I can tell you where he wants it, 'cause he showed me.
He usually, he'll pencil it on the plane.
Right. I mean, we can, he, he went down three hun, wherever three hundred feet was, so.
It's about here.
Yeah, right there. Oh, that's gonna be, I think it's left-hand side around. It really doesn't matter too much. All right, well, you know what, one thing else that he mentioned, uh, you got the electrical on the right-hand side? Uh, he mentioned he wanted the electrical in the la, the underground, which makes sense by the houses, the house side he wants it. Especially with the wall going up. So, he wants it on this side, all right?
Is it the west side?
That would be the west side, yeah. Another quick question. In regards to, uh, like the road bond, um, would, uh, what is the town's feeling if one of the lots got put up, uh, as collateral for the bond?
No, we don't do that anymore. We, uh, were involved back fifteen years ago when we did that, and then we were, the town was third person involved trying to get our money back.
No, but there'd be no, there'd be no mortgage on the lot. The town would be first position.
We don't, we don't use land as the collateral. You need to get a, uh, bond at a bank or a cash book or, you have three choices, but no, we don't use land.
What are, what are the three choices that the town likes?
Um, the bank book.
Right.
A, a letter of credit from a bank.
From a bank, all right.
You know, a tripod.
Tri-party agreement?
Yeah.
All right.
Or a cash book.
All right, the bank, a commercial lender is acceptable, bank?
Right, and it has to be in patuity. It can't lapse in one year. And then we have to fight to get it renewed in case you don't get everything built, so.
Okay.
It has to only be released by the town's letter saying it can be released.
Okay. But it's, it can be from a, um, a commercial lender that's licensed in the state of Massachusetts, correct?
Yes, yes, and also, money can be released as the project develops. After you get certain things done, you can just submit a letter. I'll be out there inspecting it. If you get the gravel down and the, uh, first coat binder and the cost of that can be deducted from that bond as you're doing the electrical and underground. So, it won't be tied up that long, so.
Good, all right.
The only thing I don't see on this plan is the fabric that goes under to stabilize.
Fill the fabric?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's the only thing I don't see on here, so. But I'll read it more when I get home. All right, so, anything for the audience or whatever, and then we can continue it.
Yeah, next thing, you have to make an appointment with the water board. Usually Monday nights.
So this has to go for a board process with the water department?
I need a motion to continue the hearing to three, three fifteen.
Motion to continue the hearing till March third.
Seconded.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Certainly looks like Walter's not going to make it. So we're only going to be able to open it and possibly information and then continue it.
You can do a site plan on that, you can't do.
Yeah, we can do the site.
You can do the site plan, I gotta get another.
Yeah.
Next one, you guys have a good night.
Yep, you too. Did Larry give it the tear sheets and stuff?
What I got is this, this is Nancy giving me.
That's Nancy's.
Yeah, and it's got the dates.
Larry, do you have the tear sheets of the advertisement and the return receipt cards?
No, this, this is, this is the hearing, I'm going to do the hearings on the two bylaws. Remember, that's what we were going to do.
Most of the audience is here.
Yeah, well, we told them what we were going to do.
All right.
The next thing we're going to take up is the two hearing notices that were posted in the Eagle Tribune for February second and February ninth, two thousand and fifteen. The first one deals with the medical marijuana bylaw. It's the registered marijuana dispensary is now known as. Can I get a vote not to dispense with the reading the damn thing, please? We're going to be here the rest of the night just reading this thing. It's one, two, three, four pages long.
Does that come from us or the audience? The audience, yeah.
The audience. I, I need to get a vote to dispense with the reading of the bylaw. Somebody say yes. This has been a long road with this one, I'll tell you right now. Yes.
My understanding that the other way is zoned for that facility?
Yes, it, they can be located in the industrial zone, this was gone over by town council. We had two, we got two bylaws that are going to go before the town meeting this year. And town council approved both of these additions to the existing zoning bylaw. And I'll give you a synopsis on what happened to the proposed new zoning bylaw after this, you know, which I've been doing.
That's not going to change that zoning event?
No, no, there's, there's no zoning changes whatsoever at all, it's just a big location. And so it's, we talked to the police department about this as well, and they, they had pretty much said, put it in the industrial zone. They felt that was a little bit easier for them to deal with if there were any problems at some point in time. And most towns, that's what they've been doing. They haven't been located, you really can't put them in residential. You can't locate them near schools, anywhere where there's, you know, children. And so, you know, you get into problems of where can you go with it? And if you look at the industrial zone, what's left of it, it's pretty much business. So, that's, that's where it's going. But if it does come within, I think it was, we settle on three hundred feet of a residential home, the answer is no. Touching a residential property. There are still a few residential properties in the industrial zones, not many. So. That's, that's, any, any other questions about it? It's, it's pretty much written relative, I took most of it from the town of Dennis. And they were one of the first towns to get approved in the state, they were also one of the first towns to get actually approved for a dispensary. And just about every city and town in the Commonwealth, the exception of some of the larger cities. Because they don't have zoning bylaws, they have, you know, entire, literally cabinets of bylaws and ordinances and, you know, so many that you could fill a bookcase. A big bookcase. But most of the towns in the smaller cities have been adopting what Dennis did. So, we did the same, and we don't think we're going to have a problem with the attorney general's office on it.
How far is that from Bagnell's School?
Oh, it's a good distance, I, I would say. It's probably, you know, more than a quarter of a mile up to past the Chinese restaurant. But then when you look to Center Street, because there's part of an industrial zone in Center Street. If you cross the backland of the Bagnell School, that's out where the horse farm is, literally. That's, that's the closest location to that, and I would, I would probably put that at, you know, probably as, as much as a thousand feet. And beyond that, I mean, you, you'd have to head to Chesterton, to that area. Up to Salem Street, where there are a lot of residential houses on the easterly boundary of that. But it is industrial in there, it's more than likely not going to go there. But we're, we're basically doing what, you know, it's a state law, it was passed a couple of years back. We're at the tail end of this. And, you know, we, we feel as though we've got a lot of things in this bylaw that are basically going to protect. And if we, I don't, I don't, I don't see us having a problem, I really don't. If we had put it in a business zone, we would have had a problem. But there was a caveat in that of three hundred feet.
Now, what happens if the town meeting turns that down?
That could be a very serious problem for the town.
That's a good question, Jack, tomorrow I'll get another domino reading.
Yes?
Joe DeMorn and I, Carrie Tre Lane, I'm speaking on behalf of the board of selectmen.
Okay.
I think you should read the document, public record. Because I know that I have no idea what the parameters are, and I have a question. Is the bylaw silent or articulate on proximity to state-owned land? For example, do you have a facility if it's within so many feet of conservation land or state-owned land? Recently, the state purchased ninety-six acres. So is there a location in the industrial zone that you may have a state-owned land that would allow a facility?
Joe, I, I did look at a lot of different bylaws from different towns that did, were submitted, did get passed. And I didn't see that anywhere in that, you know, you could, you could have it so many feet from that. I did see, basically, if I can find it real quick for you.
Because I do know down in Dennis, I know the area, there's a lot of conservation, state-owned conservation land down there, so that concerns me. If they were able to put a facility there, then it might be a heck of a lot easier to put a facility in growth. More than you think.
Say that one again.
In Dennis, there's a lot of conservation land, state-owned land. So if they were able to put a facility there, I'm just guessing, then I'm, I'm wondering if the bylaw says it's, you could put a facility. For example, let me reverse it, you can't put a facility so many feet or so many yards away from a school, correct? But do we have the same thing with conservation land or state-owned land? I don't think so.
Well, I mean, if it's, if the state owns that land or they're going to authorize that land to be used for that.
So a school is a block.
School is blocked.
Residential property is a block. I don't believe the conservation land or state-owned land is a block.
Okay, no registered marijuana dispensary shall be located on a lot within three hundred feet of a residential zoning district boundary line. Okay, so like I'm saying, there are some residences within the industrial district.
Well, that's my concern.
So it's three hundred feet away.
Some of those might be a candidate to be purchased by the state, for example, Jim, that's my concern. We've got landlocked land that was recently purchased inside of a federal city that was privately owned, and it was just recently purchased by the state. So if those residential lots are purchased by the state to continue expanding our woodlands, now does that create a condition that would make it more favorable for a medical facility to be equipped? That's all I'm asking, I don't have the answer, I don't know if you guys.
Let, let me go on, nothing within three hundred feet of a residential zoning district boundary line. Okay, so that's, that's pretty powerful when you get into what, if it's next to a residential district, okay?
One thing I wanted, anyone that has a question like that, that needs us to look it up through Copeland Page, or call the state and find out, submit it in writing, and then we will follow through, that's what the hearing's for.
Of course, the chair of the board of selectmen will have to ultimately authorize that.
Right, right. Chain of, chain of command, yeah.
It's also a house of worship, a school, a playground, or a daycare facility. And if it's a daycare facility within the industrial district, so that shopping center that that's in, that's going to be a no. I can tell you that right now. The distance under this section is measured in a straight line from the nearest point of the property line of the protected uses to the nearest point of the property line of the proposed RMD. The, the one thing that we did hear back from town council on this bylaw was it's pretty much going to be overseen by the attorney general's office, period. And they're not going to restrict these things going in, that's the whole thing. So we've restricted this as much as we can.
Within the law.
Within the law. I mean, originally, town council had come back to me, I think it was January of two thousand and fourteen, and threw out the way this originally was written, saying it should be a little bit more than just the industrial district. So he wanted to put in the business districts, which the business districts in this town are quasi-residential. And in some, in a lot of cases, more residential than business. So, we, I argued with him about this point in January of this year, full year. And he acquiesced at that point, and he understood that what we were going to have to do at that point, because we had so much land in the industrial district, that he acquiesced at that point and said, okay, I understand where you're coming from. So, you know, it came full circle back to where it started. Which I was happy with that, because I, I can't say these things could be a problematic situation. There's been one over in Ward Hill for a number, about a year now, as far as I know. They're in Amesbury. I don't know, I don't visit them, so I can't tell you a whole lot about them. You know, I mean, if you want us to do a field trip. First, I got to get down off the ladder from banging ice, so. You still want me to read this thing? I don't want to read it down either.
We're going to be putting it in the town clerk, the library, and the police department, so people can get copies of it.
Yeah, we'll, we'll make this, we'll have it online.
Yeah.
And, you know, to, to get away from a lot of the things that we used to do by nailing them to trees and stuff like that, you know, years ago. And then finding out the next day it disappeared anyhow.
Well, we had talked about this before, we wanted this out now, so that people have plenty of time to do it.
I had, I had distinct feeling at last year's annual town meeting, this, this was not going to have a problem. And I don't know any of those people, so. All right, that's one down.
I'll submit that in writing, just the whole handle.
Yes, good.
Where's the other one? No, I got another one. Let me, let me write down some, we don't have a secretary, we're a poor board.
There's separate hearings.
Yeah, but I've got to find the other one, here it is.
So if there's separate hearings.
Yeah, yeah. Well, the, my, my, my thought behind this whole thing is to continue both these zoning bylaw hearings right up to the town meeting.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, this one's separate, so we could vote on continue and then open a new.
Yeah, that's, that's. Well, let me get something down on paper first, okay? Everybody can go to sleep for a while.
We're doing the man.
Yeah, that's what I figured. Oh, okay. Who's alternate, who's that?
I don't know. We have to, we have to.
Approve one in.
Approve one in. Yeah, oh, for the, to put it in.
Yeah.
No, we've always had that.
No.
That's what Jim was just saying? Yeah. Jeez, I always thought that was in there, according to the Mass General Law, that it was planning board of five and then alternate of two.
We remember voting.
I thought we did, years ago.
Tom Mead.
Yeah, Tom Mead. I thought we did. Because we had to bring that up at one point for another special, special time. Town council said we never voted that in?
What?
The alternate member? No. Jeez, I thought we did that a decade ago. That's, that's Mass General Law.
Okay, so we're going to do a motion to continue the hearing? I'll motion to continue the public hearing.
Second. What's the date we're continuing? The first week in March or the third?
I just seem to bring it up every meeting we've got, so.
Third?
Yeah. Okay, I got a motion to continue the public hearing for the medical marijuana bylaw to March third, two thousand and fifteen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I don't need a second.
I don't need a second.
Okay. 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 Unanimous vote passes to continue. For, want to open the hearing. Want to open the hearing on the, Jesus, where is it?
S T's part?
To add the.
Read the tear sheet.
Yeah. You want to read this whole thing?
Uh, no. Which, which one is it?
The associate.
Shit, no, this isn't even what we did. Oh, Christ, put that away. I'm going to talk to Nancy. Wait a minute. Well, she says advertising the E or second and ninth. She wrote it here. But I need the tear sheet.
What's this?
S T's. Don't mix those up, please. We're going to get to that next. Okay? Okay, want to open the public hearing on the, adding to the Groveland zoning bylaws, section fifteen oh five, with subject, subsection fifteen oh five point one, associate member. Basically, we've kind of run into a problem. We have one member right now who is an abutter to a property in the town of Groveland that will require a special permit. And that member cannot vote, can't even be in a room. And the special permit, you're supposed to have five members present. You need four votes, any affirmative, to pass. And that's, that's kind of prohibiting us at this point. So that there is a clause in chapter forty A that allows a, the planning board to have one associate member. And that's what we want to do at this point. And real simple, that the associate member would be voted on by both the planning board members and the Board of Selectmen to appoint an associate member. And that person would serve for one year. And that every year that would come up to be a reappointment between the two boards. The two boards can also remove that person for any reason, any cause. And that's both boards, again, voting to remove. There's a very similar thing in chapter forty A, that the zoning board of appeals, which is the entire zoning board of appeals, is appointed by just the Board of Selectmen. Pretty much the same stuff. We just haven't put this into the zoning bylaw for the planning board. But what we're finding now is that we get into an awful lot of special permits. And we need another live body, simple as that. So if anybody's interested. Joey, you're crazy.
So, point of order, do you need five for a special permit?
Yes.
Do you need three for?
Three, believe it or not, what's, what's crazy about the whole thing is, you know, we can grant a subdivision with three members, an entire subdivision.
The bylaw is silent on this, so therefore you're invoking the right to do this based on Massachusetts law.
Right. Right. The zoning board of appeals has five members and also has three associate members. You know, quite frankly, I'd love the planning board to have two associate numbers. We can have absences as well. I mean, it's, it's not just in a case of having a conflict or, like we have right now with one person, she's an abutter. Like I said, she can't even be in the room.
And that appointment is good till June, and then we have to be.
Right, right. It's, it's like you're going to appoint at July first and re, you know, it'll drop dead June thirtieth, and we'll be back in to see you right away. I mean, that, that's the easy part. The hard part is finding somebody to take the job.
I had a question, Jim.
Yeah.
To volunteer.
To volunteer. Larry, I thought you were.
Thank you for that explanation. Mitchell Croner, three Canhill Road extension. Jim, does this apply just for special permits, or what if there's a conflict on?
No, just, no, just, just special permits.
So if there's a conflict on a subdivision?
Right.
We just have to deal with it?
We've done, we've done some with just three members present.
It involves a letter from the developer saying that he would go along with the three instead of four or five.
This isn't anything new. The, the alternate member, I, memory serves me, I think we brought this up before, over a decade ago, because of a very similar circumstance. It's been in the Mass General Law for a long time. We used to call them alternate members then, and the planning board is allowed that too. So we just never put it into action, apparently. But if, I'm sure Jim has done his research in Nancy, too. I, I thought this did come up once, just to be rolled in and accepted. If we're bringing it up again, apparently, apparently not onto that. But it's been in Mass General Law for decades. So this should be a no-brainer going through on this one.
This was actually around in nineteen fifty-four, when zoning began in, in the town of Groveland.
Yeah, so we got the zoning.
It just then got picked up along the way. But I, I can remember back in nineteen sixty-eight, when I wandered into a planning board meeting one night and asked a question, and I was immediately made an associate member. Illegally at that point as well, you know, but it, it was like anybody, they could get off the street at that point, you know, that had a, had some thought of zoning. You know, you got bagged, I'll tell you, and I've been here ever since, one, one form or another, you know? I think I was twenty-six at the time, I'm seventy, I'm going on seventy-three. I think I'd wake up by now.
Should be used to government service.
So, anyhow, any, any questions on this? Okay.
Motion to accept?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Aye.
Will they vote you now?
All right, now.
We do an act with those two, both of them at the same time?
Well, we, we can do, we can open that, I mean, it can be done.
Okay.
Uh, what, oh, yeah, one thing that I want to, a motion to continue the associate member hearing two, three, three, two thousand and fifteen.
Set motion?
Okay, that's a motion.
Second?
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Just, just to let everybody know, I've been saying this since last October. We, we had pretty much come up with a, a new bylaw that was done by Blattman, Obrowski, and me. And we added a few things that we stole from the town of Merrimack that we liked. We created our own use matrix, which we really liked. And we had a, a meeting with the zoning board of appeals, and they didn't offer up a whole lot of stuff, but, you know, it kind of meandered for a while through the summer. And then the Board of Selectmen wanted to have town council look at the bylaw. And it, in January, what they want to do at this point is to have town council go through the entire bylaw. Also looking at what the town of Merrimack came up with, because it's a very similar town, it's a great bylaw. I felt like copying it, which you're not supposed to do, but since, I don't know how many towns around, and this copy does, back in the seventies, eighties, and nineties, you know, it's, it's like, you know, it's fair game, I think. But we did meet with town council, and the town council realizes what Groveland is. It's a small town, it's a residential town, it has some business, it has some industry. And he wants to also gather some other bylaws from some other towns and represent some other ideas to the planning board. And there was going to be an awful lot of work, believe me, on that bylaw still to come. And when you get to the end of January, and you got a town meeting the end of April, I didn't think we were ever going to make it anyhow, and that thing just kind of lingered on for too long, four more months. So my thought was, yes, let's go ahead with town council reviewing it. I think it's a good, good idea. I never thought it was a bad idea. I thought it was always a good idea, just came a little later than I thought. But, you know, we'll probably be off another year, and it'll probably be the end of April two thousand and sixteen. And I'll be going on seventy-four at that point. And, you know, we'll get there. That's, that's all I can tell you. I, I went through a big rewrite back in nineteen seventy-five. I think we finally got it done in seventy-six. It was then known as the Dead Sea Scrolls, because we didn't have computers back then, we pasted stuff together. And we had to retype all that. Thank God we had a secretary at Western Electric that did it for us. So, but, you know, there, there's an awful lot in, in not just zoning bylaws, but general bylaws as well. I think this town is long overdue to update its general bylaws. And you really want to, you want to get it right. And you want to get it as right as you can, because let me tell you right now, things are changing all the time in terms of laws. And I certainly have seen it in the years I've put in on this. And the more eyes you have looking at some, a document such as this, the better off you're going to be. So that's why I said, let's, let's go ahead with town council reviewing it. Okay? Mitch?
Again, Mitch Mitchell Croner, here as a civilian tonight, but I'm also a real estate attorney. I've had many questions from clients as to what the zoning bylaw is going to contain. Personally, as you know, I've been addressing this issue about detached in-law apartments that I don't want to get into tonight, but I would just like to know what the next steps would be after we get it back from town council. Would it be, I know there has to be an official public hearing, but are there going to be other opportunities for the public to speak?
It's going to be a lot.
It'll be, it'll be what we just did tonight, we'll just carry them forward. There'll be multiple public hearings, that's all there is to it. This is the way, I, I, like I'm saying, I go back to nineteen sixty-eight, I was officially a member of the board in nineteen seventy, but that's the way I, I've done it. I was the chairman of that board, uh, was seventy-three to eighty-three. The only way I got off it is I had to resign myself. I got tired of it, nobody wanted the job. But that's the way I like to do things. I like to have the thing just roll on, roll on, roll on, until everybody is exhausted their questions.
But my comment was going to be to Jim, even though he and I have disagreed on this detached issue, I think he's to be commended, you know, for the TV audience, for all the hours and hours he's put into this. And I'll say this for our selectmen representative, I think it's another example why we should have a town planner, who could have been doing a lot of the work that Jim has had to do on volunteer basis. Again, I know you have been here tonight, so save that discussion for another night. But I think Jim should be thanked for all the hard work he's done.
Well, we, we, yeah, we've, we've, we've been talking about town planner, but we, we kind of like want to put it together with a code enforcement officer as well, because that's a real problem in this town. And it's, it's a matter of dollars, again, okay? Another thing was, why didn't town council get on this thing? The zoning bylaw much quicker. It was, it was a matter of dollars. He was working on the acquisition of all the land we bought. So it was what dollars were left. And that's, that's, that's one of the problems that we run into as well sometimes. It's almost like the town is always stepping back from a lot of stuff, because of dollars needed. While the schools go forward all the time, and, you know, want, 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 and certain other laws come into effect where we got no control over anything whatsoever at all. I mean, I'm sure Bobby's going to, he'd be able to tell you, you know, his snow removal budget went by the boards a couple of snowstorms ago, before. And how much did we put into this? We wait the fire, fire trucks just simply fall apart, and then we have to run out and, you know, grab some money for that. I mean, a lot of times, what I see, and I've seen this for many, many years, that we need to get ahead on some of this stuff, but do we? And it's, 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 the only time I've seen we get ahead on something, the mistake is so bad, it costs us so much.
Just to wrap this up, Joe DeMore and I, Cherry Trulane, again, I'm speaking for myself, on the zoning board, excuse me, the zoning bylaw.
Yeah.
I believe that that project started last summer, and there was an expectation and a hope that it would go under attorney review by November. That didn't occur till January. There's also an expectation last year that maybe something would be ready for April of this year for town meeting. It won't be because of the complexity and the comprehensiveness. So to answer Mitch's question, I think, from my layman's perspective, all permitting today is driven by the existing bylaw. And if someone wants to wait for a revised version in the future, hopefully find more friendly parameters for what they want to build, then so be it. But at the moment, at best, we might have a series of public hearings just a few weeks before town meeting twenty sixteen, and hopefully have something ready for.
Well, I think, I think, I think the, the timeline is. Well, I think, I think, I think the, the timeline is, the town council might be back to us by June thirtieth. But then, that's gonna be a discussion between town council and the planning board at that point. And I don't know whether we bring the zoning board back into it or not, Joe. And, you know, it, you know, it's plenty of time at that point. I would like to have the thing discussed in open meeting, rather than hearings, per se, up to the end of the year. And at that point, be pretty much right on target with what we're going forward with. And so that we got four months to literally put that, you know, book finally together, and to get it out, you know, copies, well, we'll put it on the town website, so people can go and look there. We'll leave a copy with the town clerk, we'll put one in the library, you know, where you can make a copy of it if you want to. But, you know, it's, I think we're doing the right thing. My, it's my own personal feeling, because as we approached the end of the year, it was getting too late in the day, and I knew it. And I was hopeful that, you know, town council will have started that whole issue by the first of October, it just didn't happen, that's all. It, it's, it's awful lot of time that you put into it, but there's an awful lot of time that you have to, you know, work with the public at that point. And I will say one thing, there are really no zoning changes in that new bylaw, there will not be. The only thing we did do is to break up the zones. Like the business zone, it's different places. So, we made them B one, B two, B three. And in the industrial zone, we made them I one, I two, I three, and I four. However, most of I four is now owned by the town of Groveland. So, we gotta change there, I guess, coming up. That's, that's, that's about, and, and the reflection of that on the zoning map, that, that was the only thing we did in terms of zoning. But what you do find, just to go a little further, if you go through a lot of newer bylaws, and that's what I was after, the two newest ones up here in this neck of the woods, is Merrimack, well-written, very well-written. I love that thing. And the town of Salisbury. So, these things don't change, they don't get updated that often, believe it or not, I think ours is way behind the times. Nineteen seventy-five is the last, seventy-six, I think, was the last time it was updated, do a brand-new one. That's a long time to wait, all the way to two thousand and fifteen, so.
So, Jim, the, just to do a survey of the crowd, is everyone here for the zoning, or are you folks here for ESTs? Show of hands on ESTs? Okay, all right, it's in that. Zoning, the, just to wrap this up with the zoning stuff, this, Joe, you may not have been part of this, this started over ten years ago, where we had a pitch to the board of selectmen, to the townspeople, to get money to rewrite the zoning bylaws that we were actually ordered to back in the eighties. We did get that moving, we had a very long period of time, took years to get to the prototype of this, the draft, and then it sat, because we didn't get support at, at different groups and times, and then it was resurgence, Jim's been pushing this for a long time, and hats off to him to get this thing done. But we didn't have the cooperation we have today. For whatever the reason, we did, just like the master plan was complete, and money was withheld for that, because it was needed elsewhere in the town, and that took a long time to get accepted too, yet it had been completed over a decade ago. So, and that was a, a very long project, too, we got some state, state money for that, which was great. So, for the zoning bylaws to get, to get moving, it's not like we started it last week, this was started a long time ago, we can actually look up the date, but memory serves me, it was over ten years ago when we started this rewrite. And we got it pretty close, but there was that lack of support issue, and then it sat. So, I'm, I'm glad that it's finally coming in, but it is, the zoning bylaws are such a product that you cannot have just one hearing, or two, or three, or five, because it might take two hearings on just one subject matter to get everybody on board. And Jim's idea with electronic media today is fantastic, because people can study it, and then they can come in with their suggestions, and we can do the rewrites long before town meeting floor, and hopefully that'll go smoothly. But it is not gonna be something quick, it's just not, it's too comprehensive of a, of a piece of literature to, and legislation to put through. So.
Is this the, the most up?
So hopefully we can move forward with that and, and get that moving. Jim, did we have anything else on that for zoning, or is this just a discussion point?
That's it.
Just a discussion point?
Yeah, that's it.
So, ready to move to the hearings and get this, going, who, the, the cast this evening for ESTs, we have engineers, everybody present and ready? Can read this legal notice in? And I did see that tear sheet you just handed.
Yeah, I just, I added.
You did? Okay.
Two, 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 nine.
Okay. Reading up on the legal notice, town of Groveland Planning Board will hold a public hearing at seven forty-five PM Tuesday, February seventeen, two thousand and fifteen, at at Town Hall Meeting Room, one eighty-three Main Street, Groveland, to consider an application by Eric Harper, trustee of the Estee Park Realty Trust, for site plan approval, section one oh nine, and special permit act for protection, district section seventeen hundred of the Groveland zoning bylaw, application dated November twenty-five, two thousand and fourteen. The property located at four forty-one Main Street, Groveland, assesses Matt Parcells, eight and nine, map twenty-four. Copy of the plan application and supporting documentation will be on file at Town Clerk's office. Signed Bob Bohanley, Vice Chairman, Ad-Ran and Eagle Tribune, on February second and February ninth, two thousand and fifteen. Any objections to the legal notice? None noted, motion open hearing.
So, Marvin?
All in favor, so you might say an aye.
Aye.
Aye, so the hearing opened. Okay, who wants to take it away quick and give us the brief, the overview, and then we'll open it up?
I guess I will.
Okay.
Name's Larry Ogden, I live in Georgetown, consultant to Eric, not the engineer of record on the job, I'm just different type of engineer. This is Eric Harper, and that's Peter Williams from GZA, I assume you guys know who he is?
Yep.
Here's the, just, I'll ask for a copy of the ad, and then there's a copy of all the certificates, certified letters that have been sent out. I guess to begin with, on Mr. Harper's behalf, we will not object to sitting in front of only four people, instead of a five-member board.
Okay.
Obviously, you don't have an alternate, any, you have a number, can I?
Somebody submit that to us?
Yeah, we can get your letter.
Okay. All right.
As you said, we submitted the plans, I don't even remember when, but whenever you said it, and we submitted a revised plan back on one fourteen, fifteen. And that has been submitted to the planning board and to the other boards within the Aqua for Protection requirements.
Okay.
Just sort of, trying to remember notes there. Try to, just describe the project at this point. As you know, we're applied for site plan approval and the Aqua for Protection District. The site is located at four forty-one Main Street, it's the former property of Estee Lumber. Mr. Harper bought it approximately half a year ago. It consists of fifteen and a half acres. The property is located in the residential B district, although it is a pre-existing non-conforming use. And the uses that were used on the property by Mr. Estee, or Estee Lumber, were retail sales, manufacturing, general storage and sawdust, sawdust storage, and storage of materials. We've been in front of the board of appeals, probably three or four meetings, and it's basically coming down to that they're gonna approve storage on the rear buildings on the lot, and the front building will be used for office retail type uses. The pre-existing area of the buildings on the site, when it was purchased, was eighty thousand twenty-four square feet, this has been reduced to sixty-nine thousand eight hundred and eighty square feet, for a reduction of about ten thousand square feet. There were three shed buildings on the property that were removed, and there was a new building which shows on the plan you have as B one oh five, which was constructed to replace a portion of those sheds, which is the reason for the reduction in the area of the buildings. The, basically, the drainage on the property is pre-existing, all of the buildings except B one oh five are pre-existing. The impervious area has been reduced. I should step back for a minute, we have received the comments from GZA, and Mr. Harper's engineer, who is Mike Rosetti, from the Shonda Associates is reviewing that, and will be responding directly to Mr. Williams, if that's okay, we'll do, and work out those two, his concerns and our concerns. Come to me even the minds on those issues that were raised in his report. Mr. Harper's also hired John Clement from NEET to review the issues that Mr. Williams raised concerning MDS sheets and the hazardous material disposal program we put together. So, John Clement will be working on that for us, and we got available, and we'll get it to GZA when it's available. So, there's really, we're not at a stage at this point, obviously, that any decisions can be made as far as the board is concerned.
I think just the overview for tonight would be good, some, some comments, and then I do see one letter from the SMI chair, if there's another one, or if you have other comments, and then we could just get this going, and then we'll, we'll do a continuance, but for the expediency of time, everybody's been waiting a while. Just the overview of the project, and then I have a, just a couple of questions, and I'm sure the board's good to, so.
Okay. To be quick, the entrance shows on the, on the plan, there were two entrances in front of the building that Estee used as as their store. Down to one area next to the power lines is parking behind that building, that's the building that'll be used for retail and office space. That
Do you have the rest of these?
Yeah, the right hand.
Okay.
That entrance is gated off beyond the front building, so that there's, you need a code to get into the back buildings on the side. So, it's somewhat secure, it's not open to the public, and it's not open to people just driving in there for the heck of it. There'll be some handicap access on the front building. The remaining buildings all have entrances pretty much at grade. They were, if you remember ESTs, you could drive your truck into
Yeah.
to pick up whatever supplies you were purchasing.
You need to flip it.
As I said, the parking on the front building is shown on the plan. Dumpsters, if they're required for the use of occupancy, the occupancy on the rear, they'll have to provide those. At the front building, we'll probably be providing a dumpster for whoever uses eventually go into that building. Structures in the open space and the natural landscape of the property really hasn't changed. It's existed there for quite a few years. And in our opinion, that there is not a positive impact on the town's services, it's actually negative, because it's far, yes, far less use of the property than existed when ESTs was operating. So, that's a very quick and dirty overview.
Jim, what do you got for comments?
I guess that was one of my biggest questions, like, what is gonna be considered the existing conditions under this project, and what is gonna be proposed, I mean, at the time of the application, it seemed like some of the work has been done, and how the board is gonna view that. These buildings were removed, I guess that did impact the previous area, that, that remains that way, but I guess it's not, I think, just a little more clarity on that in the application would be helpful.
Okay, and what was the final determination on one oh five?
There hasn't been one yet, we're scheduled to go back in front of the board of appeals March fourth to give them a proposal on what we're proposing to do there. And there are two or three options that are open.
Okay. All right, on that, one of the issues, Keith, did you have, what else was?
Well, I guess we're also talking about a new pier at the site?
This drawing shows a pier, we're gonna, in discussions with Mr. Harper and Mashonda, we're taking that off. This was sort of like a master plan for the site with some expectations for the future, but it's sort of fogging some issues, so that'll, we will be revising the plan, removing that, and removing the gravel areas.
Is that something the Army Corps of Engineers looks at later, or?
It would be in the chapter ninety-one, too, and Army Corps of Engineers.
Yes, okay, so that could be a separate?
Right.
Because you do have, I don't know what those are, marches that are sitting out there? Party boats of yesteryear, or?
Boats.
Boats, is that what they're?
Well, those have been moved up from the river under an order from the Conservation Commission.
Okay.
And there were some boats down there by, I guess it's B
They have not been moved yet.
B one oh eight will be moved when get some snow out of there.
Okay, all right.
I guess the other one of the big things, like, you know, typically you see a, a parking layout, loading areas for all these uses, that's kind of missing on this.
Okay. So, you, you've got, looks like lots of housekeeping issues, so just go back and forth on with the engineering, so that's, that's good, we'll, we'll get some resolutions to that, things that you need, obviously, and, and you two can work together on that to make sure that we get that. We've got a couple of things, Groveland Light has, they sent a letter, they don't have an issue. We're here in the Aqua for Protection, too, so, you know, this, this hearing isn't gonna end tonight, we're gonna continue it out, but obviously, you get this stuff squared away, Conservation raised a few concerns here on their January nine letter, you guys got that? From ConCon?
Can I be forward these letters, I have a receipt.
Okay. Yes, we'll get that over here.
I don't know if we, if, Mr. Harper has, have you? January ninth?
I think I do have it, but it's
Do you have the most recent letter from the Water and Sewer?
Yeah.
Damn, can I?
That's, I was just looking up in here, I was just reading through them over there. Water and Sewer sent a package in. Uh, let's see, this is dated January seven from Water and Sewer. Have you got a copy of this? No, okay, so we got a couple of things here that we need to get over to, I think.
If I give you my card with an email, can you send those to me, too, when I get?
We got, it looks like we got multiple copies of a couple of them here, so, we'll have to change it right out.
Yeah, did we have another copy of Groveland Electric?
That's what I'm looking, that looked like a single, they said they had no issues on Groveland Electric, very short, very sweet from Mike.
They shouldn't, they're pretty new electric there.
Yeah, receive request, lighting department, itemized concerns, Aqua for Protection, the board of associates, the light department currently has no issues. Okay, and then we do have, you know, Water and Sewer's got a Now, this is the status of the list that ZBA put out a while back of a, of a punch list of items to be done, one, one of the big ones was the lighting, that came up a little bit.
And that's
What are we doing with that?
That's all being addressed in the issue, I mean, in the decision that they are working on.
Okay.
They closed their hearing at their last meeting.
So, what's happening in the meantime?
With respect.
With the lighting? I mean, I was out there in the fall looking at it, you know.
Yeah.
Now
We believe it's been taken care of to the satisfaction of the ZBA.
Okay, translate that in, in the item, what was done?
And Mr. Harper took a couple lights off of buildings.
Yeah.
There was a light on the pole.
Yeah.
It's still there. But the lighting, what we've explained to the ZBA was satisfactory to them.
Okay, we're about to let we have, who's, we have any issues with the lighting still out there?
Granted, the use of four lights have were pre-existing, so I would say that they're
Can you make a suggestion? Can you make a suggestion? Because lighting's my bag and what I do. The lighting that's in there, I mean, I went out there, it's, it's very nice. It's HID light, but it is very bright. I can see especially now in the winter when some trees and leaves out there are blocking the cover. Any way to get an infrared on that? And so if you would have the safety lighting that was required so that the people that would pull in, that need to go in there at night, they would trip them on, they'd go on for, there's a setting on them. You go from seven minutes to twelve minutes or so, depending on which unit you get, and then it shuts off. So it's not blinding them all night long, the, the lighting meets it. And it's just that you don't have to change the fixture at all, it's just an add-on. Electrician will go up and put in the infrared sensor on, on these buildings that are troublesome. Because I'm sure it's not all of them, right? It's just a couple? Is it just like two on the side as you, as you come down looking out?
One that, yeah.
Yeah.
And there's one that lights up the entire back river. You can see it from the bridge, Groveland Bridge. It's off the last building.
Yeah.
And it lights up the entire back.
Know which one that is?
I mean, why that light has to be on?
Is it just general preliminary lighting, is that what it is?
It's a huge problem.
We have the overhead lighting and we also have lightings on the buildings.
Yeah, the buildings, it's nice lights, I gotta tell you. They're very nice HID lighting and they're, they're the type that also shine down. But they're high because of the buildings and that's what they're seeing, they're looking right into them. But the quick fix, and it's very inexpensive, is to, is just to put an infrared motion on them. And so the guys, whoever's working in the buildings can drive in and then the lights will click on. And if anybody tries to get in there, it's still going to go on.
Well, what we could also do to satisfy the board is that we could meet you, the entire board, or one of members of the board at night for a site visit. And we open it up for a site visit during the day by anybody on the board that wants to.
You have to go to that extent to, if you're, if you need the lights.
Well, I think there's a dispute on how disruptive the lights are.
Well, if you put an infrared, then it's only going to be disruptive for a few minutes because you do need lights. It's a big place, you gotta light it up. But I, there's only a couple that I saw that I could see where maybe, because of the height of the buildings and everything, and the HIDs now, they're, they're very bright lights. But it's something to consider. Just look into that and maybe you can come up with some solutions. But I think that's a quick one, the lights stay in the building, they add the infrared detector. That would meet the folks' concerns that the things aren't staying on all night long. But also, you gotta have security out there. You do have to have security.
Well, I've had detectors on my house since I built it and I'm not quite as old as Jim, but I'm getting there. And two years after I moved in, they don't work anymore.
You know, you, you get what you pay for, Larry.
That's true.
Home Depot.
Get the, get an RAB sensor on there?
I don't think Home Depot is around there.
The RAB sensors have a lifetime on them. And, and those will last you, good, in New England, a good seven or 10 years before you have any issues with them usually. And they warranty them anyway, so even if you did and you had to change them, they'll give you new ones. And those will work on anything. You got a question?
There's one light that will invite everyone to come down Wharf Lane. It's a spotlight, it is not a downed light. It's a spotlight that comes through, you make the corner into Wharf Lane and it's right in your face.
Know which one that is, is that the?
You can see the light.
Is it an old, is it an old light or is that a new one?
Oh, it's been up there.
They're all new.
They're all new, okay.
It's a light you can see, but you can see streetlights on any street you drive down.
We have ten residential homes on Wharf Drive and Wharf Lane. We have one streetlight. Okay, why do we need all these bright lights over there? SD's didn't have them and SD's had a lot more merchandise in those sheds.
But by lot, you do have to have luminaries over the doorways and exits and areas.
A little more down?
Yeah, there, there is a possibility. It depends on what the lights, but that's, I think we addressed the issue that we got, we gotta do some work with the lighting so we can try to move up to the next one, but we'll get to it.
Or suggest we have a lighting plan?
Yeah.
Everybody is clear on what is there and what will occur in the future.
Sure.
I don't know if this would be a plus or not, but my personal, we've done more drivers out of the streetlights, it was very dark.
We give the corner and it was very out of vision, the bedrooms in the house.
Then they put a shadow on the-
That's right.
That worked out right for a while, but then it wore off.
Yeah.
Then the turn line, I don't know what they call it, it's homergy and it works.
There's a shield on the side on one side that goes down Wharf.
And the nose is down and uh-
Yeah, there's, there's all kinds of stuff you can do with lighting, you just gotta see what the right approach is onto that. So, so, okay, thank you for pointing that out. I think that's, that's probably something that might work.
It's just too invasive, that's all, that's the only concern.
Yeah, shields will go, put the light where it needs to be.
We don't want to be next to, you know, the football field.
Okay, and Peter, what else, did you have anything else on that?
I think the bigger, well, the parking and layout and also where, you know, if you have dumpsters, I assume that they're going to be enclosed.
Yeah.
So those should be, you know, shown on the plans.
Okay.
I guess.
Well, basically, when you, you talk about parking and loading at the rear buildings, the buildings, most of them have an overhead door and a passage door. Into the various units that the buildings have been broken up to and they're surrounded by pavement. Plenty of area to park, I guess the issue is whether you want to see it marked on a plan or not.
That's in the site plan, you know, you have so many spaces per-
From our point of view, the situation is that we have different types of tenants and future tenants with different uses. There are people in there that are storing things, they may come to the property once a month. And then there may be a landscaper in there that comes to the property every day when-
So just list the amount that, I mean, you could just-
We could mark off a couple of spaces at each building.
Or figure out how many spaces each unit has without marking it on. You could just figure out how many spaces each unit would have without-
They should comply with the bylaws on the, on the parking requirements, just to make proof of it.
So that's it, yeah, that'll work. From the resident standpoint, because folks have been waiting a long time. We got lighting issues that were brought up, concerns about the, about the floats. The building, this is an overview plan. And just the way the process works, just so you know, we, we discussed this, but some folks may be new tonight. Okay, this is the first hearing on this one here. We have our, our third-party engineer who's bringing up issues. They will be addressed, they'll be back in here, there's full reports. You're encouraged to, you know, produce things in writing, say it here, say it at the meeting. We'll get it and we'll get it checked out and go forward. Is there anything new that we should be looking at from the, from the resident standpoint that you want to bring forward tonight? You've got plenty of opportunities, but tell me.
One's a safety issue.
Okay.
The second gate that they don't use anymore temporarily or not using. They installed that gate, that gate was never there. That was a complete solid chain link fence. They cut, it's right behind two Wharf Drive. They cut that gate in and put it themselves, installed it. That is not part of the plan, okay? And, and they filled in the front of SD's parking lot with grass and such, cut down a tree. And they took away the sidewalk. The kids are riding their bikes out onto the street on that corner, all this past, since they filled in the parking lot.
Okay.
Um-
The gate issue, is that for fire access?
No, that was a temporary gate that was installed because they were working on the railroad bed side of the property.
Okay, so is that gonna be, is that done?
Not going to be used.
Okay, so that'll be-
Right.
Okay, chained off, okay, so that answers that one.
That gate shown on the plan?
I saw the fire-
No, I don't think it is.
There is a no, so that's-
It's currently fenced.
It has a gate on it.
Is it going to be welded up or just closed?
It's locked, it's not open.
Okay, so no access for the future or anything?
If you want it welded up, it could be welded up. Because the whole intent is that Mr. Harper's trying to have secure access to the back of the property. So they have to punch in a number to open the door, you know, who goes in and who goes out.
Yep, that's good.
So we don't want any other access from anywhere.
A spot weld.
And at some point, there's some fences along the back that are in the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission.
Chain and lock.
Yeah, chain and lock now, okay.
But it wasn't a gate is what I'm trying to point out.
Yeah.
It's a gate and they just have chain link and then a padlock on it.
Okay.
You know, if they could make it back to the original fencing so that it'd be much more presentable to the neighborhood. You're coming in and that's what you see is, you know, the makeshift gate, two sliding gate doors. And then we need a sidewalk, I mean, it's so dangerous there.
I don't, I don't think any work's been done within the main street right of way.
Okay.
You filled in the parking lot, which took away-
Yeah, on SD's property.
All right, we'll, we'll take a look at that. Pete, can you take a look and see the, the site, also the landscape plan on that to see if that, where that comes into play? I'm sure you guys got one somewhere.
What?
On, on landscape plan, which is- Just to see what that's going to look like.
Sidewalk, just the box where they have the grass.
Okay. Go ahead, Joe.
I have, again, in case somebody checks in late, Joe DeMorni, Cherry Tree Lane, I'm representing myself as a resident. Question, Larry had mentioned that the impervious area has been reduced, but it still is more than fifty percent. That means this Aqua for Protection permit can be done either concurrently with a special permit or is it going to be a separate process?
We run them at the same time, but they're two separate permits.
So do you folks have to vote on it? Do we need five members, three, or do you do it jointly?
They just gave us the approval for the four, the four.
And that's in process?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Any other areas that we need to start looking at, folks? Go ahead.
Can we just have by the end of this, a definition of what the storage is? I feel everyday storage isn't really storage, it's working from that building, taking your cars, vehicles.
You had a full disclosure on what you get in there right now, right? Is John helping you with that?
John Clement, yes.
Yeah, okay, so, so we're gonna-
There are some, there are some people that are, like I said, they're storing things, they bring them there, they don't go back for a month.
Yeah.
There are other people that go there every day. We have a builder there that comes in, picks up material, leaves.
But you do have, each building has a, is specified for something, right? So fertilizers in one area, nuts and bolts are in another area and that's something. No, so it's a multi-use for all areas?
Yeah, it's multi-use for, for light stor, for storage.
Is, is each new building or is each building set up for that now?
There's still, the front building still needs work, that's being renovated.
Yeah.
Most of the other buildings, we did some work at the back of B one oh four. There was a portion that collapsed that's been replaced. And B one oh five, which is the building that's in contention about setback, is not currently being used.
Okay.
Other than that, the other buildings are probably sixty or seventy percent occupied.
Okay.
With various small users.
Yeah, okay. I see we have one-
A couple of other questions.
Your office, you've indicated some smalls office area within some of these buildings.
That's correct, but that's the condition of the Board of Appeals is that that be removed. Why, I don't know.
Okay.
It is what it is.
Okay, Bob?
John Clement is a very knowledgeable guy, he used to work for the DEP. I've worked with him through the years, closing down a couple of major violations of paint jobs and things through the years. So I'm looking forward to work with him again, as I'm on the Board of Health too as chairman. Now, when will he know exactly what's going to be in each one of these buildings?
He's working on that, I haven't spoken to him since-
He's gonna have to come to the Board of Health with that information. Now, after watching the zoning board hearing, the towing outfit, that's out of there now?
Not as yet, no.
All right, I'm concerned with any vehicles being towed in that has been in an accident because you've got brake fluid, antifreeze, transmission oil, all kinds of things leaking. So you can't store that unless it's in a burmed-in area that cannot be leaked out. It's not permeable. Also, boats, what do you plan on doing with boats down there? Are you going to be taking boats off the river and then storing them through the winter and things like that?
Not, no way. No. There's no way.
Because I'm concerned with any washing of any vehicles, not just boats. You have to have a tight tank in a burmed-in area for washing. And that has to be recorded when you truck it away as hazardous material. And that has to be recorded. So there's all kinds of things that the Board of Health will be looking at. But we need to know exactly what's going to be done in this area. So as soon as John can get that to the board, I have two other members, and then we can make decisions on that part of it. But those are two major concern, is washing anything because people want to clean the stuff off the hulls of boats and everything all the time. And then they're changing oil if they're in boards and everything else. So any type of oil facility, if they're changing it and stuff, you might have to put in a tank there. And that has to be from cradle to death. It has to be kept track of the gallonage put in and what's taken out. So there's things that we need to look at on there. And there might be other things too, once I find out what you're going to be putting or trying to put in those buildings.
Well, the list that, there is a list attached to the application of what's currently in the buildings.
Yeah.
And that's what John will be reviewing and getting the-
Like I said, John is a very knowledgeable guy and so am I on these codes.
All right, I see we get, we get the fire chief here and the water sewer department. So I'd love to hear these, these two departments, who wants to go first?
Want me to go first?
Sure.
Jack, well, that's where the sewer department. I have a list here of items to store, various storage facilities. They have skins of fertilizer. Some of this stuff is probably in that zone two, if I'm not mistaken. Is it or is it not? Eric's shaking his head no.
Now, most of the, the zone, one of Mr. Williams' comments was to relocate the line, it's shown on the drawing. But our engineer believes that when that happens, it'll go through part of B one oh two, which is the building on the left, next to the power lines in the front building. But all the remaining buildings in the rear are in zone three. So the line we show is going to go back some.
Okay.
But it's, the only building it will encompass is one oh two and the front office building.
And what about the two-hundred-foot river? Where's that coming from, the rivers?
It's on there.
Yeah, I see, I see it, the word about where's the buildings lie within that or whether-
We will be filing a notice of intent with the Conservation Commission, but the buildings were there.
Yeah, yeah.
And they've been, they've visited the site two or three times.
Yeah, they've-
Actually issued Mr. Harper a couple of emergency orders to be able to fix a couple of things.
Okay, but is that also gonna, the fertilizers back here, right? And then in some of those areas, is that going to be an issue with the rivers building or anything? Not the structure itself, but the content?
It meets the state code.
Okay, Jack?
The list we have right here is dated eleven, five, fourteen. Is there a modern list, is there an up-to-date list we can get? Because landscaping is usually over by now and all the plumbing comes out of there. But what, I see there's a lot of five-gallon cans of gasoline. Is it all stored, is it all still stored there or what? Everything's, everyone carries five-gallon cans.
So you think we can get in an accounting and get it over to-
Yeah, with, with the, I submitted a revised one that says revised on at one seventeen fifteen.
One seven fifteen?
One seven, I'm sorry, can't remember.
Do you have a copy Jack can have?
No, I've got the eleven, five, fourteen, I wonder who you got.
One seven fifteen and I dropped that off to the Board of Selectmen, Board of Health.
This one is-
The fire chief into the water department.
Bob, do you have a copy of that too? So, so Jack needs a copy? Bob doesn't have it either?
I've got that one fourteen.
Okay.
Whenever he talks about the different structures, different boards, perhaps he adds those initially. So we know that he knows that, hey, I dropped it off to the water department, here it is.
Okay, well, we got a special request, we can make that happen very easily. So, so just make enough copies and whoever's going to be doing it, you know, get it to the board and then, and then if you could make a, just throw it in the box for, for the water sewer and for the fire-
Well, that's, I put them in the box. Well, that's, I put them in the box, but I will...
Those boxes are mysterious, let me tell you.
I understand.
Twenty, twenty-three years of government here, I knew exactly what you're talking about.
The town clerk had me make sure I was with her when she put your copies in the box. And I had her with me at the same time that she saw I put my copies in the box.
Some people just like those things otherwise.
No.
Okay, so we just need some additional updates?
I'll get an updated list. And I dropped one off at the, uh, fire department. Did you get that, chief?
Is it one or two versions?
It's the second version. It's dated one...
I'm sure I have the second version.
Dated one seven.
All right.
Oh, I put it in the box at the town hall, I'm sorry. I'll drop both of those off.
Okay, there you go. All right.
There you go.
Okay, Bob, you're up. What do you got? Or you wanna wait for the list?
No, 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 I, I'll speak briefly. I wasn't prepared to cite any concerns tonight.
Yeah.
That I haven't renewed. I think most are aware that I've been involved in this for now three, four months. And we had a meeting with the selectmen and the building inspector early, voiced some concerns. The outcome of that meeting was that Eric was to hire a fire protection engineer. He has.
Mm-hmm.
And we've, uh, we've had some communication.
Yeah.
To clarify. We could go center on it. So we're waiting for response on the number of things. But that's a work in progress for, for meanwhile, on this project, I'm kinda, you know, eating a sandwich from the middle.
Okay.
There was no plan to look at upfront, and there's no finished product to go inspect.
Right.
So I got bits and pieces of what's going on, and I'm in the middle.
Okay.
So obviously, I'm anxious to see what planned building use is, because today we only have, we have, what'd you say, sixty percent occupied? So a lot, we don't know what the buildings will be used for. And one of the concerns we did have was actual building use, and I think that picked up with by the Z B A. And it's somewhere asked to leave. I thought the zone company was, was asked to be removed. At the moment, at the last Z B A meeting, so, um, you know, I, obviously, and Eric knows this, I'm certainly giving him plenty of room to maneuver to get things taken care of down there. But at the same time, you know, performing due diligence to keep an eye on the project. Those employees are planned, and they've been able to stay as we move on.
Okay. Just an overview question or comment. We know that we, we have multi-use structures, and it's kinda like roulette, also what's going in each building. Is there a way to perhaps carve out or identify, um, your hazardous waste group? Fertilizers, X, Y, Z, and corrosive. Go only here. And, and over here, you can have your light storage, and over there, you, you know, just kinda like segregate what group of buildings can do what, and two reasons for that that may help you, and certainly would help the town. We would know, and Bob would know, if I get a problem, it's gonna be only in buildings X, Y, Z to in there. Now, of course, as you rent out storage in that, it will be a, a facility that could handle something like that. So I'm sure there's a premium on that for those that would use such a building. Um, and then others wouldn't have corrosives, we wouldn't have leakage, we wouldn't have toes, and stuff like that. Now, this is a suggestion, and just to see, is that feasible? Have you already done that? Is that probable? Um, but it would make sense to me, and I'm sure to the average individual, in particular Bob, if he knows he's got a problem out there, and what building is on, on fire, he's gonna roll in, he immediately knows that, oh, well, the hazardous stuff is only in here, so what I've got over here is just paper goods, or not so many combustibles, instead of mixing it with a hazardous waste site and everything else that's going in. Um, it may, I don't know if that's what your plan was. Uh, you're, you have manufacturing behind you, so I'm sure you have that kind of a layout anyway in a building. But this is a, a very large property with lots of buildings that I'm sure you wouldn't want somebody bringing something in that the building couldn't handle, and that it was a total surprise if somebody had to go in there and fight a fire, or pull somebody out of there. Um, but I'm sure you may have already come up with something on that.
Well, I think that's something I can discuss with John Clement as he goes through what's there now. I mean, you gotta remember, some of this stuff is in quantities that are, aren't significant.
Right.
There may be quantities that he identifies that are significant, and needs certain types of storage and treatment.
Yeah, how about the old placards up there, no more than three bags of this, or ten bags of that, you know, coming in the door?
Yeah, I mean, there's a, there's a legal limit on how much fertilizer you can store, so.
I, I think...
Certain types, so that's why we're going to him, because that's his expertise.
Yeah.
What would, what would be the product he's gonna provide? Is he gonna provide you a report? Or what is gonna come out of his work?
I think on your, on your report, there was items, I think, six, seven, and nine, or there's like items that we're, we're not...
But also something to ease the concerns of the, the board and the fire department and everybody?
I'm, I'm, I'm not worried that we're not gonna...
We don't have a hazardous waste treatment plant there.
No. I, I think, but you do have, you do have buildings that do have small amounts of things. I mean, we all know about fertilizers, and, and what they can do, and corrosives, and, and we do have aquifers, and, and we got the Manip River sitting right there. So, um, just common sense approach to it, if you had any of those things, you wanna keep them away from, uh, away from those areas, they're gonna get into the aquifer, also from the river, but also to have them in one area, so everybody knows where they are. I mean, that's, that may be just a common sense approach, but it may not be practical here. I don't know that. Uh, it may not be a practical thing to do, or, you know, maybe it's one building here, and one building there, and we just identify them with all the placards outside. You know, it's, it's just a thought, and I was just wondering how that was gonna be tackled. Cause it with, you're right, I mean, you don't really know what your tenants are gonna bring in, but you do wanna know that, hey, this is what you can't bring in to this building.
Well, it's not, it's not like a mini storage facility. I mean, these people are signing up to use the space, and Eric has a form they have to fill out, and showing what materials. It's not like a public storage where I can rent a unit and bring whatever.
No, it's just a, it's just a business, you know, running in and out, stuff like that. Completely understandable, it's ju, just that, uh, they need to know, because
Right.
you folks are gonna be, and we're gonna be more in the know than they are, most likely, on, on the property out there. Um, and so, you know, and I'm sure there'll be site inspections and other stuff later that Bob will wanna do on a large thing. Something we should've been doing in town a long time ago, had not do it with this project. But we should've been doing inspections years ago on certain things, uh, just to see what was out there.
There needs to be a centralized M S D for your sheets and books, and, you know, and everything that's stored.
So we'll get to all that. I was just throwing that out now to stay ahead of the curve, and, 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 uh, you folks have some time to, to think about it and see what's coming through. I did see a hand up over here. What was it for? Go ahead.
I was just gonna ask how that gets monitored going forward, because the trades are kind of an in-and-out business. They're not gonna be there for ten years. So how does that get monitored as far as what comes in?
Well, that's where Bob comes into play, and we were just talking about the enforcement officer to do inspections.
Well, there's, there's two pieces to that. Same tenant ongoing, it's my responsibility to inspect their, like, Eric and Larry, correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought the Z B A had requested that each time a new tenant goes in, they fill out the form and declare upfront what they intend to store. And that's the process going forward, right? Okay, so, you know, we know what their intention is, and then once they're in, we inspect against what they said they've, we carry.
Yeah.
And then we monitor.
In other, in other cities in town, it says the code enforcement officer, and, and you know this, Bob, firsthand, you just go do regular inspections, and you just go out there, and sometimes there's spot inspections, and sometimes there, you know, hey, we're gonna be there in a week, um, you know, kind of a thing. But it's, it's regular, keeps everybody on their toes, keeps the public safe. That's our job.
Board of Health agent will be checking periodically, and all new tenants should come through the Board of Health too, for whatever they're gonna store there.
Okay, so I think we beat that one up. We'll have some answers on that. Uh, any other new concerns before we roll this thing over for the, the next meeting?
I got one.
Go right ahead.
Talk to you, sir, for one or two. Mr. Harper came in initially, was very upfront, what you're gonna do up there. My question is, has the project changed from initially, is there still gonna be housing put out there, long-term?
Yes, that's the plan.
Okay. So that, if that be the answer, I think we wanna look at what the water sewer requirements would be for that project going forward.
Now, where's that going there? Is it still off of the...
On the right side of the property.
Looking from, uh, main street?
Five acres there.
Over here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Where the three sheds were, and going down towards the river.
Okay. Yeah, so that'll, part of that'll come under P U D, or Setters Control, and another, another fine. Forty B. You like that one, huh?
Yeah, I like it.
Make sure you notify them that we only have ninety days, and unless they wanna give an extension
On the special permit?
to do a, uh, report and have it done, so we are...
Yeah, we'll give you a good extension, chief.
We are under...
Who's your special file date, thirty? We got some time, but just to let, let you know on that one, on the refile date. Copy that documentation. February seventeen is the hearing date.
Uh, initial filing was December first, so...
Yeah, you're gonna need that. Is that the timestamp, or did you restamp it? Didn't you restamp it in January?
I restamped the revision.
So you didn't restamp the app, the application?
Well, she, no, she restamped the cover letter that went with the revisions.
So...
Well, you can pick a date.
So what's your time, well, let's pick one.
You pick one, we don't care.
What was the date on the first one?
First one was December first, if you wanna go by February third.
February third was the latest date?
Yeah, that's when I submitted a revised plan and a revised list of what's in the buildings.
Right. We have sixty-five days from initial timestamp, and then we have, once we open the hearing, ninety days.
You have ninety, total one hundred and twenty on special permit.
But that clock starts ticking today. You met the time for the hearing.
Right, it's, it's the application date of the hundred and twenty days that is that I'm looking at.
We should be a lot...
Onto that, yeah, we're, we're fine at the moment, we just wanna all, all nail the date down. So for, um, for purposes of when did the date start, um, if you're amendable to that, and all parties agree, the February third date would give you plenty of time.
It's fine.
Is that agreeable? Okay. Okay, so note the record that everybody's in agreement of the February third start date for the, start date for the special permit process. Okay, and extensions, of course, we'll both work together on that, keep that going. Okay, so that's...
We need four out of four votes, we're not gonna try. Yeah, we're gonna try to play nice.
Well, it's, it's, that helps everybody out in a way. It's, I, I don't think that's ever been an issue with, uh, with the members here.
One other important question.
Yeah.
It came up about, uh, fire suppression with the mains out front and everything, and you'll need to work with the water and sewer on that, on what, what you're gonna be able to do, and what you can do, and what you can't do for fires protection.
Yeah, that's, I think, I haven't read the A O L report, but that's covered in there, isn't it? Yes.
It was, it was mentioned.
Okay.
Okay.
Because there's...
Not resolved?
There's a ten inch that's deplorable, and then there's eight inch or six?
The six-inch line coming off the ten, but the ten is the worst watering in town.
Yeah, all right, so we get some work to do there. Okay.
It'll be crucial to work that out.
Site plan checklist, reference in, uh...
It's the one oh eight, section one oh eight.
Hey, wait a minute, now, he's asking a question I've been asking for a month. Where's your checklist?
The section on one oh eight.
I think I'll leave while I'm ahead.
Section on one oh eight.
Email you with the section one oh eight point...
No, I have, we have that, but...
But it refers to a checklist. I mean, you're, you're, I mean, the site plan review section is... Its requirements.
Well, the site plan, correct, the site plan review in the section one oh eight also cross-references with the subdivision checklist in, in sections three hundred and four hundred, so that goes through there, depending on what you're submitting. If you look in the back, um, depending on which version you have, um, there should be a series of checklists, and then in the, each section of section three and four, okay, there's a, um, submission checklist.
Yeah, what I downloaded, I found it, it didn't have a checklist.
Oh, downloaded, yeah, I'm not sure what, I can't speak for the download, I'm sorry. I don't know what's on it.
I couldn't find one either, so...
Okay, Joe, you had a question?
I have a question that, I'm curious now, because I've heard about the potential for phase two, whether it's a forty B or some... If you cut the property in half, the existing half that you have now, won't that be, um, won't that impact non-conforming use restrictions on that half? So for example, you can have a certain amount of cars out there now. Okay, which was addressed by the zoning board. Won't the number of cars on the, let's say, commercial part of the half of the property now be reduced because you're bringing cars in?
The whole project's gonna be looked at as a whole, but it depends on, I, I mean, you're kinda, kinda preliminary on that as to what you're looking at. It would, it speaks for itself on the filing. It has to be addressed. If, if there's a lot of traffic here, and, and five units or twenty units going there, I'm not sure what, what this looks like on the other piece there. Uh, it gets addressed, the density issue, traffic counts, everything, that's all part of it.
Cover, everything.
Yeah, it's, cause you don't know, it's kinda, it's too early to tell on that. We just know that, okay, it's something we gotta be concerned about, the water main's a biggie, cause, you know, it's gonna be, uh, on fire suppression if you're fighting whether this building or something else. So sooner or later, that's gotta be addressed, okay? And then Bob's gonna take a look at his thing from fire prevention. So, um, lots of stuff to look at, we're not gonna solve it all here right now, so. But, um, I think you folks got a lot of back and forth to go. What do you think for the next, um, to continue on? Couple weeks, or you're gonna need a little more time than that to, uh...
Our next meeting is the third and seventeen. We already got something on the third.
So that, why don't we go to the seventeenth? Yeah. So, March seventeen?
I'm not gonna be wrong.
Third, that's true, that's the time.
Okay. So motion to continue both hearings to, uh, March seventeen?
So motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, should I vote your amendments?
We have a time, or we...
So that's seven forty-five.
See what he already put on.
Did you put something on the seventeen?
Well, I mean, we're, we're, oh, no, all we're gonna do is, is basically we'll rehear the zoning articles, that's all. It doesn't take long.
Okay, so why don't we make it, you wanna make it eight o'clock?
Yeah.
Is that eight o'clock? Eight o'clock time for, uh, March seventeen, eight o'clock time, March seventeen. Okay, you can submit anything in writing to us, bring it in. Uh, eight o'clock.
Maybe Mike should come to that.
On, well, we start at seven thirty, so the, we're trying to get, you know all that stuff that you had to wait around for? We're gonna try to get that out of the way, so we don't do that again. It's necessary, but we'll try to cut that short. So thank you all for coming, thank you at home for watching, uh, for the hearing. Again, if you have any concerns, please submit them to us, so we can get them aired. Just bring in notes if you wish. Come on?
What we especially need to do is, I mean, you know, is on the, start a file for this. You can also clean up the table, and we need to start separate files. Everything to do with this hearing needs to go in a special area.
Okay.
That table is full of all kinds of...
Yeah, I just got a call from Lynn Stanton, and from the new guys coming in, so...
We need to do the same with Skitcham Way, and there's something I should...
You know what, I gotta spend, I gotta spend three hours in there with this guy, so I'll set up those files. It'll be before Friday. I can start putting these together. I can start putting these together. So I'll run in the other room and get them for you? This is the, you have a copy?
Here's an old one, you can have it, 'cause they're old, you know.
What's old about it is the lines.
They're not gonna change a lot. That's the one. They're not gonna change.
What is this new plan?
It's, it's a revision, it's a revision line, they, they moved some things on the plan from the old one to the new one, that's why. But this is a nice colored one, to identify, see these lines here?
Yeah.
Some of these moved, that's all.
Moved away.
Well, they moved back, they're different boundary lines, the buildings are all the same.
I, I'm very confused.
Why don't you take this with you? Somebody get a pen for a second.
Yeah, I mean, I think we got one copy of the new one ourselves, that's it. So.
Yeah, see, I thought there was a printout on what the plan is, what the aquifer thing was, and I have no idea what I'm sitting here for.
Well, we're not gonna make a rash decision quickly, I mean, so it's just.
What it was on.
Yeah, plenty, plenty of time.
Here's my card, my cell number's on the back, take this with you. Take it there or two to look at it, and then call me.
Oh, all right, thank you very much, my name's Ann Grady.
Ann Grady, oh, okay, hold on, sorry. Okay, let me go, you guys want to close the meeting and I can get them the, uh?
Yes, so motion to adjourn.
Ready?
So motion.
Okay, okay, motion to adjourn, so motion second. All in favor, so you can say no?
Aye.
Aye, show the vote unanimous, show the meeting adjourned at nine to eight. Thank you very much for watching at home, thank you for your interest in growing, good night. Okay. This is.
I wanna make multiple copies of every.